I call this March 3rd work session to order. Need a motion to approve the agenda. Mr. Tool?
Second.
Mr. Hammack, all in favor? Passes five zero. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, board members. Good evening, staff and community members. We have a few things on superintendent's report tonight. As you know, we've entered the month of March, which is Music in Our Schools Month. And so, I want to thank Mr. Cockwood for doing a behind the scenes piece on social media about music in our schools. Excellent, excellently done. We look forward to continuing to celebrate of our outstanding students and teachers that add to that. We also have Youth Art Month this month. And so, our student, as is our tradition, our students' artwork will be displayed beginning March 14th, I believe, at OCAF. So encourage everyone to come out and check that out. It's also National Nutrition Month, as well as School Board Recognition Month. And so, we will be recognizing the board next week as we have our board meeting and doing things for our National Nutrition Month all month long. Few other things that are happening this week. We have National School Breakfast Week. So we will be featuring lots of different items, I'm told, not only at breakfast, but also maybe some breakfast for lunch. So stop by and have a bite in our cafeterias if you'd like. It's also Read Across America Week. And so, there's various activities and themes in our schools and around our county as people come in and read to our students and celebrate that very important week. And finally, it's National School Social Worker Week. So we want to thank LeAnn Hale and Brian Bishop, our two social workers, for all that they do. And I believe we have a social media post celebrating their good work and recognizing them. As we close out this week, going into next week, we, just a reminder, our students will be out on Monday, March 10th, for a professional learning day for our staff. And as we go into March 17th, we will have Georgia Ag Week. So we'll be celebrating agriculture, which is so important in our community and also around the state. Few other items we want to point out that maybe you've seen on social media as well, Advanced Placement Honor Schools. Congratulations to both O'Conne County High School and North O'Conne High School, being recognized in all of the categories that they were eligible for, which includes five different categories. We were both schools of distinction, STEM schools, STEM achievement, humanities, and humanity achievement schools. So congratulations to our high schools and students and teachers for that. Congratulations again to Ian Rogers. As the board knows, because you were in attendance, thank you for attending the Star Banquet. Ian from North O'Conne was recognized as the representative for our county, for Star Student, and will be attending a regional event next week in Athens. And so, we're cheering for him and also his star teacher, Scott Smith, to perhaps go forward and be Star Student and Star Teacher for our region. Finally, from an athletic standpoint, we want to congratulate North O'Conne's girls' basketball team for an outstanding season. Their season came to an end in the Final Four, triple overtime. So wonderful game and an outstanding effort by our young ladies. But North O'Conne's boys were victorious and will be playing for the state championship versus Pace Academy on Thursday in Macon. And this is their second straight appearance in that state title game. So, Mr. Carter?
Go Titans!
There you go. We also, while we celebrate and conclude winter sports, we're also still celebrating our fall sports. North O'Conne's football team has been invited to the Capitol on Wednesday, and they'll be recognized at the Capitol for winning the state championship. Mr. Carter?
Go Titans!
Okay. And then finally, as you know, spring sports are in full swing. All you have to do is drive by our high schools or our middle schools pretty much any given day, and you'll see the lights on in the evenings, and you'll see our administrators, teachers, and students there taking part in those activities that are so important. So again, appreciate the board's support in allowing those sports to take place and all the things that take place there. And also want to say thank you to our administrators. I know those are long days, long evenings, and your support there means a lot to our kids. And I know we could not do it without your being there to take care of that. That concludes the superintendent's report unless there are questions.
Any questions? All right. Thank you, Dr. Branch. Next, we have teaching and learning. Ms. Whitaker, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. The March 3rd Teaching and Learning Report contains three items of information and one action item. The first item of information is an update on Career Technical Agricultural Education Month. In February, we celebrate CTAE, and our middle and high school classes have utilized this opportunity to promote their program areas and provide information to students and parents during the registration process. All eighth grade students toured the high school to explore career pathways and course offerings. Parent nights were held for middle and high schools to educate students and parents on course offerings and pathway choices. The second item of information is an update on kindergarten registration. Beginning Monday, March 10th, parents can register students through our online registration system. We are excited to welcome the newest members of O'Conne County Schools on March 31st and April 1st, when they will visit their new schools for kindergarten screening. These screenings will take place from 2:45 till 5:00 p.m. The third item of information is an update on our Regional Science and Engineering Fair. O'Conne students competed at the Regional Science and Engineering Fair on February 8th at Piedmont University. OCS students earned 11 gold and two bronze medals at this event. The first-place finishers will advance to the State Science and Engineering Fair, held at the Classic Center in Athens, April 3rd through 5th. In addition to placing first with their projects, Ruby Darnell of Dove Creek Middle claimed the American Chemical Society Award, and Annabelle Bloom of O'Conne County High and Garrett Torres of O'Conne County Middle won the Jackson EMC Pinnacle Award. Tonight's action item is an update on our Advanced Placement Psychology Curriculum. New Advanced Placement Psychology Curriculum was recommended to the board and approved in the spring of 2019. It has been six years, and this resource is up for renewal. O'Conne teachers, administrators, and our secondary director, Andrea Pender, reviewed and selected updated resources. These instructional resources will be available for review in the Teaching and Learning Office. This will be paid for using general fund dollars. The superintendent's recommendation is to approve placing this curriculum on the table at the March 10th, 2025 Board of Education Meeting for public review and comment until the next Board of Education meeting in April. That concludes the Teaching and Learning Report unless there are any questions.
Are there any questions?
I'm curious about the AP Psychology Program. Is it pretty popular? Do you have a lot of kids that take advantage of that? How big would you say those classes are?
We are able to fill those classes. Actually, the last year, the college board changed the standards after we had already purchased curriculum. And so, the curriculum that we are purchasing, we have been piloting this year and has been very favorable with teachers and students.
Great. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitaker. Next, we have Student Services with Dr. Yancey.
Good evening, Dr. Branch and board members. The March 2025 Student Services Report includes three items of information and three action items. The first item of information is our annual participation in the survey system from the Georgia Department of Education. The Georgia School Climate Surveys aim to measure the quality of school life by evaluating student and adult experiences related to academics, relationships, safety, and the learning environment. Surveys are offered to four groups of stakeholders, our students, teachers, staff, and families. The parent survey window opened on December the 2nd and will remain open until March 31st. The teacher and staff surveys began on January the 6th, and the student surveys, which are administered to students in grades three through 12, are currently open at this time. School leaders will have access to the survey results at the end of May. The second item of information is our athletic programs. On behalf of our students, coaches, and school leaders, I want to again thank you for the continued support of all of our athletic programs. Last year, the board decided to allow sixth graders to the opportunity to participate in middle school athletics. As we look at participation rates through spring sports, in total, we've had over 200 sixth graders participate this school year in middle school athletics. This includes the 78 that are currently competing in spring sports. As a reminder, sixth grade students have the opportunity to participate in all middle school athletic offerings except for football. The third item of information pertains to our School Resource Officer Program. In September, we enhanced law enforcement presence in our schools by assigning SROs to both high schools. Following the signing of the Memorandum of Understanding in January, we have expanded the program by adding more SROs to our schools. Captain Mark Smith has assumed the leadership of the program and will be based at Malcolm Bridge Middle School. Last week, Lieutenant Paul Maxi began his role as an SRO at Dove Creek Middle School. And today, Corporal Quentin Neesmith started as an SRO at O'Conne County Middle School. With these additions, the SRO team now consists of five officers, four assigned directly to schools, and Captain Smith overseeing the program while maintaining a presence at Malcolm Bridge Middle School. Each SRO is fully committed to ensuring the safety and security of O'Conne County Schools, students, faculty, and staff. Sheriff Hale and his team will continue to recruit qualified deputies for SRO positions based on criteria jointly established with O'Conne County Schools. New officers will be added as soon as qualified candidates become available, and we will keep you updated as our SRO program continues to grow. Student Services has three action items for the March 3rd board work session. Action items are three out-of-state field trips. The first trip is for North O'Conne High School students to travel to Washington, DC to compete in the 2025 National Congressional App Challenge. The second trip is for the North O'Conne High School band to travel to Orlando in April. And the third trip is for O'Conne County High School DECA students to travel to Orlando to compete in the International Career and Development Conference. The superintendent's recommendation is to approve the three out-of-state field trips as presented. And this concludes the Student Services Report unless you have any questions.
Any questions?
I have a comment and a question about SROs. I just want to thank you, Dr. Yancey, for all the work and the staff to get us to this point, because everybody up here knows what an effort that was to get where we are. So to see those faces on that org chart is really exciting, because it means we're making great progress with that. Well, Captain Smith at MBMS, is he going to serve as the SRO? Or what is the timeline like to get? Because that's the only outstanding middle school, right? Unless he's serving as that SRO?
Correct. That will be our next location. But we are, you know, awaiting information from the sheriff when he has a deputy available, and that's where he'll be placed.
Great. Well, you know, we talked about at the beginning of this how the process could take some time. So I think it's really encouraging that you've been able to place people so quickly. So thank you for that.
Yeah, we've had a ton of help, and the staff has helped. Mr. Kofers heavily involved, and we appreciate the support of Sheriff Hale and his team as well.
Hey, will Captain Smith stay at MBMS? Is that a geographical decision?
We're working through that.
Okay.
Yeah, still working through that.
Great. Thank you.
One more question. As we fill the positions at the individual schools, will Lieutenant Maxi move up to the administration portion of that, or will he stay at Dove Creek Middle?
That will be towards the end. He will remain there until we fill out all positions, but he is part of that four-member leadership team with the sheriff's office.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Next, we have Special Education with Ms. Cornold.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Branch. The O'Conne County Special Education March 3rd, 2025 Board of Education Report contains one information item and no action items. The Individuals with Disabilities Act, which is IDEA, requires that all states review the data from each of its local LEAs and evaluate if the LEA's performance in meeting the requirements and purpose of IDEA. After the review of the data, states are required to make a determination on whether the LEAs have met requirements, they need assistance, or they need an intervention put into place. These are the indicators that are, the state is monitoring us on, indicator 4B, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, timely corrections, timely and accurate data, and then maintenance of effort. Last month, I did report on indicator 4B, 9, and 10, and we had met all compliance. This month was the final determination, where the state sent the review to every superintendent and to the Special Education Department, and they give you a report card, and you get a zero through two for all of the indicators. And this was our report card, and we had a 100% on all the requirements that are needed for special education. That concludes the board report for special education unless there's any questions.
Next, we have Technology with Mr. McCullers.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Branch, O'Conne County Schools Technology Services Report for March 3rd includes one informational item and no action items. Information item number one is an update on the Windows 11 transition. I'd like to update you on the successful completion of our initiative to transition teacher devices to Windows 11, the latest major release of Microsoft's operating system. As a part of our ongoing commitment to providing a professional and efficient technology environment, we have now completed the transition of all Windows-based devices across our 12 schools. A total of 1,519 devices were imaged as a part of this effort. Windows 11 brings improved performance, enhanced security, and a streamlined user experience, all of which are vital for supporting our teachers in their instructional needs. The update has not only removed unnecessary background processes, but also improved device speed and reliability. This ensures our teachers have the most effective and efficient tools for their work. To minimize disruption to instruction, we worked closely with the school administrators to ensure that the transition was carried out smoothly. Most of the updates and imaging were done during teachers' planning periods or after-school hours, so classroom activities were not impacted. I would like to extend a special thank you to the Technology Department for their hard work and dedication to making this transition a success. Their behind-the-scenes efforts were crucial in ensuring a seamless process for our teachers and our schools. And that concludes the Technology Services Report unless you have any questions.
Thank you. Mr. McCullers? Operations, Dr. Wyatt.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Branch. Operations has three items of information for this evening and one action item for the March 10th regular session. The first informational item for Operations is an update on our energy report. Our kilowatt usage per day for 1,000 square feet has been updated for the month of January. As you can see, it was cold in January. The second informational item is our transportation update. For the previous month, we had 31 field trips, 90 athletic trips, 21 special education trips, 160 buses deployed, for a total of 13,890 miles. Our third item of information is an update on school nutrition participation for the month of February. Board members, you'll see that we saw a decrease in participation for breakfast of 0.3% and an increase of lunch participation of 2.91% as compared to February of 2024. Our action item for next week's regular session is for white fleet vehicles. Just like our bus fleet, we want to maintain a replacement cycle on our white fleet vehicles that are used across O'Conne County Schools. We currently have five vehicles over 200,000 miles that will require replacement. Three vehicles will be for maintenance technicians, one for the mechanic supervisor, and one for technology. We expect delivery of these vehicles, if approved, in mid to late July. Once we take delivery of these vehicles, we will bring our annual surplus vehicle list to the board as well. The superintendent's recommendation is for the Board of Education to approve Aiken's Ford with a bid of $266,851.94 based on state contract pricing. This project will be paid for using ELOST and general fund dollars. And this concludes the operations report unless there are any questions.
I have just a couple. So looking back, if, so looking at the, I think it was F-250 on there. So will all five vehicles be the same, or they're going to be different types, the Conno line, et cetera? Or?
Yes, sir. Great question. So the maintenance technicians and the mechanic supervisor will all have the F-250 body. The mechanic supervisor will have one of those reading bodies on the back for the tools they need to repair buses out on site.
And they will come fully outfitted? So will there be, will there be any additional items that will be added to the vehicles after we accept delivery?
Yes, sir. So as part of the package deal, the maintenance vehicles will have a rooftop that will hold ladders as well and pull out drawers in them for all three of those vehicles. The mechanic supervisor will have the reading body, and the technology van is just an Conno line van, and it'll have a metal mesh behind it, just to make sure nothing hits the driver during driving.
Okay. And that'll all be installed by Aiken prior to delivery?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Good job, Ron. That's really, really needed in maintenance, and that's going, everybody in maintenance and both transportation is going to be really happy about that.
Thank you.
Facilities, Mr. Ricketson.
Good evening. The O'Conne County Schools' operation and facilities, March 3rd, 2025, Board of Education Report contains two items of information and two action items for the March 10th Board of Education Meeting. The first item of information is the Lead Custodian Meeting for February, was held on Thursday, February 13th, and was hosted by the team at Malcolm Bridge Middle School. The team discussed slips and falls and the proper use of scrubber pads. Our custodial teams are to be commended for their rigorous work, ensuring that our schools are clean for health. Second item of information is construction update. The ISE, I'm happy to report that the contractor has completed the architect's punch list. They are continuing to respond to any warranty issues as they may arise, and we're currently working on the closing paperwork. District-wide generators. The contractor has begun placing generators in their final locations. They will continue to work to make connections and perform start-up operations over the coming months. We are expecting the last two generators to arrive in May. Action item number one. Got ahead of myself on my notes here, excuse me. Action item number one is O'Conne County High School practice field lighting. This is an upgrade of the lighting on the practice field from recreational lighting levels to competition levels. We Musco Sports Lighting priced this job for us for government projects as part of the approved Sourcewell contract number, contract. The superintendent's recommendation is for the Board of Education to approve Musco Sports Lighting with a bid of $135,290 for sports lighting at O'Conne County High School practice field. This project will be paid for using ELOST and general fund dollars. Action item number two is the Georgia Department of Education Facilities Plan. Every five years, we're required by the Department of Education to develop a local facilities plan. This plan is specifically related to any facility work that would be eligible for state funding. As you can see from the chart, every school is listed along with the amounts of state dollars that we would be eligible for. As a reminder, state funding for any of these projects typically amounts to a fourth to a third of the actual cost of, to do the project. The superintendent's recommendation is for the Board of Education to adopt the attached Local Facilities Plan Resolution. And that concludes the Facilities Operations Report unless there are any questions.
I have a question about the lights. When it comes to that, how long do they estimate those lights will last before they need to be replaced?
They have a, they will have a 25-year warranty.
Could you explain the approved vendor bid on that again to me, please?
Yes. We, we are able to use Musco lighting because they are a part of the Sourcewell contract, which is pre-approved nationwide contract that the state of Georgia recognizes.
Can you also talk about the importance of those being competitive lights rather than rec lights? What does that necessarily mean for the students?
Well, that would allow us to host games on that field if we so desire. It also allows our athletes to practice under real-time conditions of what a game will be like.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Human Resources, Mr. Kofers.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Branch. Human Resources Report this evening contains one item of information and no action items for the March 10th Board of Education Meeting. Our item of information is an update on our request for proposal for a benefits broker. Displayed before you is our timeline that was provided as a part of the RFP process. We have successfully moved past the submissions deadline, and after a review of proposals, we've identified our finalist. Later this week, we will hear presentations and be conducting interviews with these finalists to further evaluate their qualifications and determine the best fit for our district. We remain on track with our timeline, and will continue to keep the board informed as we progress toward a final decision. This concludes our report this evening, but we remain available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kofers.
Yes, sir.
Communications, Mr. Cockwood.
Thank you, Mr. Ransome. Good evening, board members and Dr. Branch. Communications Report this evening contains two items of information. The first item is February social media information. O'Conne County Schools registered an average of nearly 14,500 views for its 39 social media posts during the month. The top post for February was the announcement that NISH had chosen O'Conne County as the number-one county in America for public schools. That post was viewed almost 51,000 times and was shared more than 300 times. Three of the top five, four of the top 10, and nine of the top 20 were related to athletics, led by Vera Spencer of North O'Conne, winning her third straight state championship in wrestling. That post was viewed nearly 38,000 times. For the month, 25 of the 39 posts were seen more than 10,000 times and averaged 18,655 views. OCS gained 126 followers in February, giving the district more than 22,700 across Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. In addition, the OCS newsletter released on February 25th had 8,447 unique opens, which is a rate of 68.8%. The industry average for education is 40%. We thank the parents, students, community members, businesses, and media outlets that follow and engage with the OCS social media accounts. The second item of information is the February highlights video. As you can see, a lot of great news packed up to 28 days. And that concludes communications unless there are any questions for me.
We do have a need to go into executive session. I need a motion to do so.
I will make the motion that the board will adjourn to executive session to discuss or deliberate upon personnel matters as described on the affidavit to be attached to the minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Parrish. Mr. Tool, thank you. All in favor? Passes five zero. Passes 5-0. We're adjourned.